Oh, I had to go, I had to go lots.
Let's pray. Most kind gracious Father, Lord, we thank you for this day and all the many blessings of life, Lord. God, right now, I just pray that you'll be with those families that's lost loved ones, not only through these months, but more just today. God, I just pray that you'll be with them. Wrap your arms around them. Lord, I pray that you'll be with his commission as they meet, take care of monthly business, Lord. And I pray, God, that you just continue to bless our county. In the name of your son, Jesus Christ, I pray. Amen.
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
First is approval of minutes of previous meeting. Got a motion by John, second by Samantha. Any discussion? Roll call.
First.
Yes.
Debbie.
Yes.
Debbie.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Samantha.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Next is approval of reports of offices.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by John, second by Samantha. Any discussion? Roll call.
Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie.
Yes.
Debbie.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Samantha.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Next is approval of notice. Thank, we got two. Anybody see more than two? Linda McCartney, friendship church road in Delano, and she's a swatter from Ben Station Road in Ben.
Motion to approve.
Motion by John, second by Samantha. Any discussion? Roll call.
Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
Debbie.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Samantha. James.
Yes.
Next is budget amendments. Okay, budget amendments next. Uh, budget amendment number twenty. Proposed source of funds is other contracted services amount thirty dollars going into fifty-two, three hundred, seven oh nine for data processing, an amount of thirty dollars. For accessory property though.
Motion to approve. Second motion.
Got a motion by DeWitt, second by James. Any discussion on budget amendment? Roll call.
Craig.
Yes.
Debbie.
Yes.
Debbie.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Samantha. James.
Yes.
Next is approval of highway official bonds. That's from Roy Jean.
Roy Jean, this is, is this just, we're upon, uh, it tends to somehow, it just like, we like doing it. It's supposed to be processed through the executive's office and then come through there. Just need your approval on it and we do file the documents, not, we do, probably not have the original please sign, it has to be signed by the executive. Cause all the expenditures already went through.
Motion to approve. Got a motion by John, second by Samantha. Approve Roy Jean's bond. Any discussion on the bond? Roll call.
Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie. Yes.
Debbie.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Samantha.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Uh, next is the twenty twenty-two agriculture extension committee members. I guess, did you put that on there? They might hear from four acres tonight. Guess we'll put that, put it back, yeah, we can do it next Thursday. He was out of town. We can probably do it Thursday. You gotta add somebody to it once you get, somebody in town is probably gonna make it. We'll add that to, uh, next Thursday. Next Thursday, uh, next is, uh, cold quiet comp time. Somebody from Laysa, somebody from Laysa though. Pull away that on there. We got a big problem. There are some dates on here of July twenty-first and July twenty-third, twenty-twenty with comp time. And the payroll report says you're on vacation. And how can you be on vacation and there in comp time at the same time?
I don't know, Debbie. I mean, the, the timesheets have been, every time that I come, it's a, it's an issue. It's something different, so, I mean, I don't, I don't.
This has been on there since day one.
I've never seen, you didn't have that the last meeting I was at, the copies of your, my timesheet. You got that after that meeting. So I didn't, I didn't know that was an issue.
I don't know, it might be a simple thing of the wrong dates.
It could be. You're, you're probably possibly right.
Can you get that corrected?
I mean, I'm sure I can. I mean, if it's, if it's those two dates, then just take those two dates off and subtract the time.
I'm not willing to do that. Your boss is gonna have to do that.
It ain't my boss anymore.
Well.
That's the issue. I mean, I, I'm not a employee there anymore.
It's her, it's her signature on here.
Yeah.
And she's responsible for this, so she needs to do the corrections.
You, you can contact her and.
I'll not contact her.
Probably good thing.
I make a motion, we table this until the timesheet is corrected. Can we, uh, take, talk to Laysa, somebody and take this up next Thursday too? If she can get it fixed, fine, that's fine.
You're welcome.
You're gonna continue the meeting till next Thursday? If you can get in touch with her and say, I need the correct timesheet fixed, we can possibly handle it then. We want you to get paid for the time you worked, but we need the correct records.
I already deducted a hundred hours that I worked. I mean, so obviously you don't want me to get paid for it. Cause every time I come, it's something different. I mean, like I told you at the first meeting, I was there the time, I mean, I, I don't know about the dates that you're talking about now, because I didn't have copies of the timesheet, cause that wasn't requested until after the first meeting. But pay me for the time and I'm done.
Bring us a good corrected timesheet. Or have, Melissa bring us a corrected timesheet.
I can tell her that, but I mean, my advice, maybe y'all should provide timesheets that y'all need county employees to use across the board.
That's gonna happen, in two votes from now, three votes from now.
That'd be, that'd be a wise decision.
Yes.
And also put in your handbook about the, I mean, I got an hour deducted from my time for hour lunch. I guarantee every employee that's sitting in this room gets paid for an hour lunch. They're not on, they're not at the office. They may not close the, the whole office at the same time, but that court system, it's hard to run just on one person, so therefore it's easier to close the whole office for one hour. Cause I know everybody in here takes an hour lunch and gets paid for it, so it would only be fair to go back and deduct an hour from everybody's time that they put for comp or days off. I mean, I don't see what the issue is with me.
It's not you.
Yeah, it's, it's me. I mean, that's my timesheet that you're not paying me for, so it's me.
It's not you, it's the timesheet that's not correct. If you can get her to handle that by Thursday, we have, the, the meeting is continued till Thursday of next week. Anybody want, second, DeWitt's motion?
We're gonna table it to Thursday?
That's what the motion, yeah.
Second motion.
Got a motion by DeWitt and a second by James, so we'll table this till next Thursday, take part in the meeting. Any more discussion?
Do you actually have the power to do that on your own, Mr. Trevor? Do you have the authority, anything on that agenda to move?
We'll go ahead and, we have a motion to say. Roll call.
Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie.
Yes.
Debbie.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Samantha. James.
Yes.
Next is, uh, sheriff department grant approval, uh, commissioner P.
That was only last month and I messed up, cause I forgot. And he said he was gonna have somebody remind me and they forgot to remind me. Sheriff's office got a, uh, grant, uh, that are primed for, it's right at two hundred thousand, I believe. Robbie and I write on that. I know you, you've seen the paperwork. The county executive has, has signed the application process for it, but it needs our support, uh, uh, to, uh, to show that the commission is behind and deal allocate to the purpose of the grant. And along with that, uh, there is no matching fund, so it's two hundred thousand coming in. Uh, the only question on this commission even had to vote on it was, uh, at one point, there might have been a continuation after the grant money expired to keep a worker, which put it into budgetary on the county side. That, that is not the case, uh, and it is a draw grant. They were to draw down the money, uh, after the expenditures remain. Uh, it's an attempt to reduce, uh, recidivism to grant a one hundred percent budget by the state program and requires no matching funds. It will be flow-through funds, it will be a drawdown. Uh, I make the motion that we fully support the county executive in the application process, the sheriff's office in the process, in accepting the funds for, uh, two hundred thousand.
Second. Motion by John, second by DeWitt. Any discussion on the grant?
I know you talked to her attorney when I first brought this up, because of time delay, that's what you needed.
Roll call.
Could you repeat the motion?
The motion to, uh, is to show acknowledgement and support for the, uh, the grant to come into the jail and, or to the sheriff's office, uh, for some recidivism, uh, reduction. And to fully, uh, support the county executive in making whatever contractual agreement needs to be made with no county money involved. In other words, we receive the money.
Basically, it's flow-through money?
It was a reimbursement, I prefer that change.
I thought it was a drawdown, is it a reimbursement?
I haven't heard.
I, I believe that we reimburse, I believe we expend and then they draw it down. That, there, there was a change in some of it the last minute.
And then we get it back, a longer duration, yeah, we do have to spend it first and then.
Okay, so it's, it's, we draw it after, oh, we reimburse.
She was trying to get that changed, um, but I haven't heard that very well.
But one thing that has not changed is fully funded, with no county money.
Either way, we have to. Is it second?
Uh, yeah, I think that motion's second.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Craig.
Yes.
Debbie.
Yes.
Debbie.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Samantha.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
I'm saying, Mr. Paxton come in. Uh, we didn't think you was coming, so we moved you to next Thursday, but if you wanna go back over your, uh, agriculture extension committee members, we'll, we'll go back to that, so, you know, come back next Thursday.
What's everyone's want?
If you'll do it tonight, we can go ahead.
Well, that's Franklin at four fifteen, so, that's good. Uh, you know, we always do act committee informants this time of year. We had several that, uh, has expired, uh, Candace Bates, Kevin Smith, Carmen Ray, Johnny Dunn, Ray Brooks. Candace Bates and Johnny Dunn can be reappointed for another two-year term. What are these notes here? Um, but the other three have served maximum. Let's see, uh. So, yeah, we'd like to recommend that, uh, let's say that, uh, that Ms. Bates and Ms. Dunn be reappointed, and then we've asked, uh, Sam Hood and Sheena Hare to be appointed. So that'd be our recommendation.
You talked to both of them?
Yes, they both accepted that they would be appointed. We do need another commissioner, since yours expired. We normally went, uh, we got one from each district. The four districts are coming up, so I'm gonna leave that to y'all's pleasure, cause I don't know what we need to do, so.
Does that have to be appointed?
We need to replace Greg with somebody.
I mean, when will that timeframe, when will that need to be done? Tonight or?
His is actually expired, so we really need another one. I know that fourth district's not coming in till the next election, so.
Can you have any?
Uh, within one. Yeah, uh, let's see, the other two, uh, James Woody and Daniel Deal, they're still in the middle of their, their terms.
Anybody wanna volunteer? Anybody interested? David, you interested? You're calling, you're up on.
If nobody else don't want it, I mean, yeah, I'll take it, but I, I'm, I'm gonna run ahead of anybody. If anybody wants it, it's, that's fine.
Make motion for David. Second. Got a motion by DeWitt, second by Mark.
And that, that's, that's history recommendations as well.
Yep, yeah, okay.
Yeah, y'all don't fight.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Craig.
Yes.
Debbie.
Yes.
Debbie.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Samantha.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Next is, uh, library board appointment, county executive.
It's not really an action, it's just an informational session, so, uh, we wanted to turn up, here we go. Uh, just wanted to give you some information about how the library, uh, works. Um, we always think of books, but we wanted to emphasize tonight the technology part of it. And so you have here some information about what we're doing at the East Polk and the West Polk Library, uh, our circulation, our, uh, number of computers, how many resources are downloaded. Just, as I said, information on, on, on that. Um, our libraries are technological resources for the community. We do a lot of things with, um, our patrons who come in. For example, in the past few weeks, uh, we've had a patron who created a certificate honoring a family member's service in the military. Small business owners come in and use our printing and faxing equipment. Uh, our staff helps patrons work with online courses. Our staff also supports patrons who need help in signing up for insurance or EBT cards. We do those kinds of, of things to help. We have mobile hotspots that are very popular. People, uh, come in and get them and use them for their internet services. Over the last year, we had almost thirty thousand combined number of wireless sessions at our two, at our two libraries, thirty thousand. So we do a lot with the technology. Our libraries do have a grant, uh, the ARCA grant, and we, uh, have almost twenty-five thousand. And that was mon, that money was used to purchase four computers, which included educational programming for children eight and under, such, and they include things like reading, math, STEM, coding, art. Uh, we've got additional funds that we'll be using for iPads, books, two sets of books about each state, eBooks, um, nonfiction, uh, chapter books, homeschool materials. And then we converted our, um, catalog system to a new system, so just again to emphasize the fact that our libraries do a lot with technology, not just paper books. Our director is here, if you wanted to, uh, ask a question about, with Lori, she's in the back, if you needed to see anything, otherwise, we just wanted to kinda update you on what we, what we do. Thank you.
You got an application, huh?
Lori, did you have an application for the appointment for the library board? I didn't have one turned in, I just knew it was supposed to be on, but I didn't ever, you know who that one was for, Lori?
I remember. That was Kathy Enslin? Kathy Enslin?
Kathy.
Yeah, she's had an application, uh, we gave her an application to, or whatever it needed to be brought to you all for appointment. We've done it several months ago, I don't know, but that, that's who that is, from the, uh, basin area.
I, I don't, I don't remember seeing that coming through the office, but that's all the applications that you all.
We've had a vac. Yeah, we've had a vacancy for several months. I know I gave her the app, you know, the paperwork and, uh.
Did she turn it back in, Lori?
Yeah, I verified, y'all received it in September, had Melissa stamp it and everything on it.
She was, I was just thinking her vote or not realizing what it was for.
Okay, so, yeah, it may have went into the library file, but yes, if Lois did stamp it in, but it may have went there, but that would be the one appointment that would be.
Yeah, we need that one, yeah, a point, that, that's a vacancy.
I would make motion, we recommend, or take the recommended invitation of the library board to appoint. Miss Enslin?
Mm-hmm.
We'll do that Thursday so we can see it.
That would be in line with what we've done on other boards and applications.
Well, since we've already seen the application, we had it back four months ago.
We did.
Yeah. When that's saying one.
Yeah, it did, like I said, it, it may have came into the office, if it was stamped with Lois's time and it was properly in a file, but it may have came in and been put back in those application files.
Uh, I was, I withdraw my motion.
But I can, we will have it Thursday, if that's, if that's the, touchy with the board, if that's what the official likes to see.
We'll move the library board appointment Thursday.
I'll get that figured, they said.
Right next is, uh, ARC money. Uh, I've got it on here, but just got my name decided for a place over there. Everybody on the commission, uh, committee, commission, you know, everybody worked on, uh, bank, John Holt for writing the resolution. Most of all, thank all the employees for being patient. Took a long time to get this right here.
I wrote it and it's actually agreed.
Said, oh, there's some type of. Oh, no, I know, I just thank you for taking the time to do that. Y'all always write a resolution for us. Thanks again to the employees for being patient with us. It's been going on, what, four months at least? If it passes, it'd be good to get it behind us, I'm sure. Got the resolution in front of me already. It's resolution one, one twenty-two. Whereas the governing body of Polk County, Tennessee is proud of the workers of both the county government and school system for their steadfast persistence in the face of personal exposure, sickness, or danger thereof during the past few years. Whereas the legislative body of Polk County has received and is legally authorized to expand federal American Rescue Plan monies on premium pay for employees who serve citizens of Polk County during the COVID-nineteen pandemic. And now therefore be resolved by the Polk County Commission, meeting in regular session is twenty day, twentieth day of January twenty twenty-two, at the following premium pay, repaid for work previously done and already paid for under normal tax hours of work. This premium is for the betterment of county employees and frontline workers of county, specifically under Polk County Funds One-O-One, One-Sixteen, and One-Thirty-One. Polk County Health Department and School Department employees, both certified and non-certified, along with employees of care and aid of Polk County. The premium pay shall affect the following at the rate stated below. Section eight, Polk County Health Department workers fund One-O-One, One-Sixteen, and One-Thirty-One of the Polk County Government, current employees, RS follows. Number one, full-time workers capped at forty-five hundred, equaling a rate of two hundred and twenty-five per month after bill completion of said month. Number two, part-time workers capped at two thousand, equaling a rate of one hundred per month after bill completion of said month. Be Polk County Board of Education employees, our premium pay to current employees and education budget as follows. Number one, non-certified full-time school personnel under twenty-five thousand per year receive one twenty-five per month of service between March first of twenty and October thirty-first of twenty-one with a cap of two thousand dollars. Number two, all other full-time certified or non-certified school personnel would receive one hundred per month of service between March first of twenty and October thirty-first of twenty-one with a cap of fifteen hundred dollars. Part-time employees are to be pro-rated to the average number of hours worked in a month divided by a hundred and sixty times full-time rate determined the premium pay per month rate. Number three, the school system employees responsible for any required withholding that may, may need to be made. See medical, a transfer of thirty-two thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars and sixty cents for sole purpose of premium pay to workers in the county with an amount per employee capped at two thousand dollars. Equaling work, pro-rated by month, worked over thirteen months, over thirteen months. Over thirteen-month periods shall be made to care and aid of Polk County. Be all monies included in this resolution, and any amended or added additions are held to be a one-time, non-return, non-MOE, which means makes of effort. Premium amount added over pay for hazardous work conditions under that. China, COVID-19 pandemic covered from March third, twenty-twenty until October thirty-first, twenty-twenty. Is the department, board system, employees responsibility for any required withholdings that may need to be made from a receipt valid cash flow. This resolution shall become effective on passage, public welfare requirement. Got a motion?
I make a motion to pass one, one-twenty-two.
Second.
Got a motion by John, second by Debbie, in discussion? Roll call.
Greg.
Yes.
Debbie.
Yes.
Debbie.
Conflict, no vote.
Mark.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Samantha.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
We got five yes votes, one conflict, one pass, so motion passes. Bonuses have been approved.
Mr. Chairman, I do need to include that I have a perceived conflict on that of a family member that is a teacher.
Let him be, fine. Moving on, number eleven is time sheets. Commissioner raises a moment.
Catrice has come up with a uniform time sheet to take care of any problems that may come up. So it's got a running total comp time and vacation time and everything that all offices are going to be required to fill out and turn in to her. That way, there's no more problems with anything like we've got with your time sheet here. So hopefully this will clear up any future things. And this is one that Catrice likes, we'll approve. Since she writes the checks, I think we need to go by this. So I'll make a motion that we adopt this time sheet as the official time sheet that must be turned in for payroll request.
I'll say. Got a motion by Debbie, second by John Holt on the universal time sheet, in discussion? Roll call.
Greg.
Yes.
Debbie.
Yes.
Debbie.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Samantha.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Number thirteen is Ray Communications, county executive. Next week. Want to do that next Thursday?
Well, just an update because I read in the paper where it said it's supposed to be taken to the attorneys, but that talk hasn't too with both the attorneys, it's committed by the web committee and Mr. Logan and in our current county attorney, Eric Rooks. And I believe Greg and Debbie and John was in one of the meetings the other day. And so based off of what Jimmy Logan has put before us, I'd like to have this put off till next week. Bring back before the commission, was the recommendation from Ray Communications.
I'll do this Thursday. Take it back to the next Thursday. Anything else anybody want to say about broadband or Ray? Number fourteen is VC broadband, Commissioner Pedder.
Mr. Hood did tell me, Arizona did tell me yesterday, they still have an interest in Polk County and doing business with Polk County. I hope that we have something standing with the Ray, which they're aware of. And they, they left a sentiment that they'd be here tonight. I thought it was needed, I told him I didn't think it was, but he got off to be here. And he also said that they are, you know, more willing to work with us if anything, if we need anything on broadband that they can do, along with the grant. There's still one bullet worth in Slade. So, I don't think Aaron did show up tonight, but like I said, he did apologize. He said he would be here, but I feel I didn't feel like there was a reason as long as we were at a Ray and, you know, the option of looking at. And unless somebody's wanting to make a move toward VC, I have nothing further.
You go ahead. You got any more minutes, sir? How much more time we got on that grant? Sometime in February. What, end of March? End of March. End of March.
They have to, they have to apply for it in the March, but they have to work up the grant, the Polk's data and information to be able to turn in it. So, it's not like you just yell over it and say, hey, yeah, we need that, and then turn it in the next day.
I think they've got it in the March, but if we're going to do anything, we need to act on it, or February.
That would be more of a time.
We have one item or two to spend the rules for.
Yeah, for those.
And what these, our bids got put in our packets, which got put on agenda, the award bids or deny bids. So, will anybody want to make a motion to suspend the rules?
What was that thing on suspension?
Yes.
Is that the only thing we have for suspension rules?
I'm trying to think, I believe it is.
Make a motion to...
Hold on just a second, we got...
That's the...
For the head part.
That's the A, please. Put that down. Yeah, that's the A. A motion to suspend the H and A, please.
Second. Got a motion by John Holt, second by Debbie, to suspend the rules to deal with the bids, in discussion before we go? Roll call.
Greg.
Yes.
Debbie.
Yes.
Debbie.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Samantha.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Yes. We have bids turned in for concrete work at Show Barn, for that parking issue, election office, and... Were there one more?
Yes, the health department.
The Copper Basin Health Park.
Yes. And we have the electrical show barn. And the X-Wave. Going to go with the health department first?
Yeah, we went to go with health department.
Any meeting is here with the health department. But what had happened was is the phone systems, that's the health department in the Basin area, went down a couple of months ago. They've been having to have a line to transfer those calls to the Basin area. And what this is, is to the state has agreed, instead of the money that the county would usually pay the state, they've agreed to let us use that same money to fix the phone systems at the Copper Basin Center. And it was to the total, the only bid that was turned in was to the total of eight thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars and fifty-five cents. Anything you want to add to that, Jim?
No, that's Greg. Currently, right now, we're using a temporary system. The call we were, the call to state was, the customers of Black Box, they basically let us use the phone for free. All we had to do was pay for installation, but we don't own those phones. So, we're required to have our own phone system, so that's why we turned in the bid for this.
I make a motion, we accept this bid from Black Box. Second. Got a motion by James, second by Debbie, accept. I guess it's only a bid. It's only a bid, we got any more discussion? Roll call.
Greg.
Yes.
Debbie.
Yes.
Debbie.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Samantha.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
See, next, obviously, Dugan.
You have the one bid that was... Okay, we'll do it later.
Whatever comes to you on that, go ahead and get it out.
We only had one bid that was turned in for the electrical, the show barn, and it was in the amount of thirty-six thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars and eight cents. Some on the commission that was there at the meeting that day expressed an interest to turn that back out to a rebid. So, I would ask that if you all still want to do that, that you would deny the electrical bid that was submitted, and we will go back out to RFP rebid for the electrical to show barn.
Yeah, I know that. If everybody could. The Polk County News, in my opinion, the best paper to ram, but it just landed. You know, basically, Polk County, if everybody here could contact one electrician and tell them about it. Because, I mean, just one bid, you know, we don't know what we're looking at, we agree on that. Surely, everybody knows electrician, you know, they can call, like, kind of try to get the word out.
Do they have to be licensed and bonded?
The legal notices are, when the legal notice runs in the paper, it's also on the state website, which is index searchable.
Oh, well, they don't hold it.
So, most companies, if they're looking for, probably don't look, they're from Nashville or somewhere, they go to that state website, sponsored by the Tennessee Press, and you can see them for free there. It's probably where most people go and search for those. So, there's a little more exposure, but some of them local.
One bid on the level of the electrical, the show barn, Sanders Water Company with the... Know the song on the home, so it's a really good one. So, I like that motion. I've also been asked first to specify the outline of the bid a little more specific, perhaps, but there's some question on footage of the wire. We're requiring concrete. Reject. He makes those reject. Be more specific on the bids. So, it includes all under codes currently served. Correction, to my knowledge, that bid does say to meet COVID. And that bid is currently out, and we went ahead and cleared out.
Second, you got a motion by John, second by Mark. Any more discussion? Roll call.
Greg.
Yes.
Debbie.
Yes.
Debbie.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Samantha.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Let's address the election commission bid, which we need to act on that because time changes. We've got the early voters coming up for the May primary, we're really pushing on time.
You had multiple bids turned in in multiple ways. Central asphalt, and if anybody wants any of this information, just if you'll contact office, I'd be more than happy to turn this out. Central asphalt incorporated for the grading of two pads, placement of four-inch base stone, two-inch of asphalt, came in a total of forty-four thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars. That's for the dirt work and asphalting of the election commission. Then you had Maxwell Escavating turned in a bid to do the dirt work only, and that bid was twelve thousand, three hundred dollars. Then you had a bid turned in by Sanders Flooring Group to only do the concrete. Total was twenty-nine thousand, one forty-one, sixty-four. Then you have one other bid that was turned in by Tim Reimer Construction, and Tim turned it in with just dirt work, for dirt work and concrete. The dirt work bid was strictly dirt work, was eighty-eight hundred dollars. But for the dirt work and for the concrete as specified in the bid, was a total of thirty-five thousand, two hundred dollars. The total for both? Yes. Thirty-five thousand, two hundred dollars.
I make a motion to accept, Mr. Reimer. Thirty-five, hold on. That's the cheapest combined bid.
It doesn't hold. The parking lot. Thirty-five thousand, two hundred dollars.
Second. Got a motion by James, second by Mark, award the bid to Tim Reimer Construction for the work at the election commission. Any discussion?
Tim, what is your projected timeline? I understand with weather, but how far along before we do get started? Because I've shared with you in this, you know, it's pretty time sensitive.
Uh, weather's running near January, first of March. So, what it is?
They get what you make?
Give me. Any more discussion? Roll call.
Greg.
Yes.
Debbie.
Yes.
Debbie.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Samantha.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Okay, and let's see, we got concrete, show barn.
So, before we do that, when there was one that was not, we did not get a bid on, that was the handicap doors. But I've also turned that back out to bid, and I've already seen two phone calls that people are going to be coming next week to show those, those sites, so I want the commission on that. Correct. What's your time to make on the bid? Those bids are February... Or the bid opening will be February the seventh, twelve o'clock in my office. They will be in your office package to be voted on on the February seventeenth meeting. So, I'll have those back in to you next week. The swimming pool. I need to understand these rights, and I know you all have asked, and I have too. So, for the existing pool deck to be cleaned, cracked field. The pool liner to be re-plumbed, three-hundred-and-eighteen thousand, one hundred and four dollars. For the existing kiddie pool, be renovated, concrete green, large splash pad, new swimming pool, deck done, concrete filled, seven-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand, three hundred dollars.
Who did you work? Bid date?
Sanders Flooring Company.
Three-quarters of a million, huh?
Seven-sixty-two, three hundred, yes, sir. To install just the swimming pool, a new thirty-by-fifty vinyl swimming pool is a hundred-and-twelve thousand, five hundred dollars. To do a new pool, plumbed in with eight returns pump system, inside deep perimeter of the existing pool, would add a splash pad to this for an additional eighty-two thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars. And for the existing pool to be cleaned and cracked field, that cost us twenty-four thousand dollars. Coming to just the pool and the pad at three-hundred-and-eighteen thousand, one hundred and four dollars and sixteen cents. So, have everything completed with the kiddie pool, splash pad, concrete done and a pool, seven-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand, three hundred dollars. And then to just have different parts done, is anything from a hundred-and-twelve thousand, eighty-two-five, twenty-four thousand, for a total of three-eighteen, one-on-four. So, we did not have anything turned in for the repair of the pool. And I know that assumption that you all, so, once again, I went ahead and turned it back out one more time with the repaired the pool, because I don't think there's anyone that wants to spend these three-hundred-and-eighteen thousand or seven-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand, three hundred dollars.
Motion to reject current bid?
And turn another one out?
Yeah. Second. Got a motion by John, second by Debbie, to reject the pool bid. Any more discussion? Roll call.
Greg.
Yes.
Debbie.
Yes.
Debbie.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Samantha.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
I think this is life.
Show barn.
Concrete pool. So, we had two bids turned in, one... So, we had two bids turned in, um, one was by East Tennessee Construction at nine thirty-one program. Um, that bid was for forty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. The next bid that we had for the, for the concrete at the Show Barn was by Sanders Flooring Company for forty-two thousand, seven hundred, three dollars and eight cents.
Forty-two what?
Forty-two, seven oh three, eight.
Yeah, there was a paper that said that.
No, not on the Show Barn. No, the, the paper was on the election commission office. But the paper for the election commission office was almost, well, nine thousand dollars more than the concrete was.
That's what happens when gas hits, or you something, when there's so much petroleum in asphalt. You watch the gas prices. When they go over three dollars a gallon, the concrete is always cheaper than asphalt.
And I know some of, some of you, some of the commissioners have stated, um, what would it hurt to just level the barn floor? Um, maybe go back with some kind of plug pack? If that's what, you know, you all want, want us to look at to do, if there's something other that's under the bid amount, everybody knows that I can do that, well, at, at this cost, that would have to have your own approval. So, I think this is about the second or third time that we've turned out the concrete floor. But the two bids that you have on the concrete floor of the Show Barn are forty-two thousand, seven hundred, three dollars and eighty cents, or forty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. I'll make a motion to go ahead and award, uh, Sanders Construction this, uh, bid for forty-two thousand, seven hundred, three dollars and eight cents.
This guy right here was asking to speak, Greg.
Boy, the Sanders Flooring did not have wire nor fiber mentioned in his bid at all. And I think that was part of the requirement for the bid. So technically, if you just accept his bid, he could technically not put wire or fiber in this, this wire option.
How do I, I talk about-
He doesn't put any options in whatsoever.
I thought it was optional.
Sanders says that the price of concrete went up January first, twenty-twenty. Um, the concrete pad, the four-inch crown, be poured. As, this estimate is bid out with three options because plus the option. Concrete only, four thousand specs. Ready-mix concrete, typical price. Um, he's got pumping included into that at fifteen thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars. He's got his cost of forming and grading and finishing for nine thousand, five hundred and four dollars. He has the outside listed for twelve hundred dollars, gravel labor, uh, at twenty-two hundred dollars spread, and grade for slab at two thousand dollars. And he has the labor at a cost of fourteen thousand, nine hundred and four dollars, with a two thousand dollar extra for a pump truck. And his total, uh, cost is forty-two thousand, seven hundred and three dollars.
And that's without wire?
Yes.
That's without wire. Now, your bid had wire.
He has, but it doesn't say, um, anything about fiber or before that. There's not a process for what he did, for what he did.
The bid from East Tennessee Construction has the excavation removing at forty-five hundred, has gravel at thirty-five hundred, rebar to be drilled in around the piers, the foundation tied in at two thousand dollars. He has the pump at sixteen hundred dollars. Um, he has the concrete with fiber, four thousand BSI, at a cost of fifteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. He has his labor cost at sixteen thousand dollars, and he has wire at two thousand dollars. So.
I give two different asks for some there, if it's, um, if mine's the-
Get us home here, it says that if the price includes fiber, however, concrete with fiber will be approximately five hundred dollars less, bringing the total to forty-four thousand, eight fifty. Sanders Flooring Company is forty-two, seven oh three, still. Uh, the price that includes, that includes wire, the total without wire would be forty-three, three fifty. So, if you took the, the wire out, it's forty-three, three fifty from East Tennessee Construction.
How much was Sanders without wire?
Forty-two, seven oh three, eight.
Sanders without wire is still cheaper than, than that wire.
Has, has other bids that didn't come in with, uh, technical stuff, they did or whatever, that they kicked out before the cost, it wasn't this year.
The commission, I mean, they've, they've accepted or rejected based off of, you know, if it's the cheapest and or the best. And that's what's stated in those bids. It don't necessarily have to be the cheapest. It could be the cheapest and or best bid that is awarded. This becoming, Debbie asked where this money would be coming from. This would be coming from the county general to cover this call. The grant money that we had for the RDGP grant, the twenty-five thousand dollar grant, is what we would be pulling for the electrical.
Would this be some of that one-time money we had to spend this year?
If that's, you know, any obligation, you can allocate it from whatever line you would allocate this from.
Motion dies, relax and second. Want, uh, any more discuss? Anybody want to make any more motion?
I think it's hanging in, is being the back out. You got to either reject or accept.
There's basically three, three hundred dollars difference between the two bids, if you leave out the wire and the, and the fiber. Is that what the difference was? Can we get some reference jobs and put this off till next week so we can look at the kind of work they did? Because we don't want to get stuck like we did with the employee firehouse.
I also, um, I also had two thousand dollars for rebar putting around the piers. Um, that wasn't in the bid. I can leave that out. I don't think it wise to leave that out just because you have concrete there. You have, that's pretty much your foundation. You're not doing any type of foundation on, on that far side, on the left side when you walk into the building. It's pretty much going to be kind of, you know, um, erosion issue. And if you don't drill anything into that, it's just eventually it's going, it's going to fly. But I can leave that two thousand dollars out, it would be two thousand dollars cheaper.
Six forty-six.
Yes.
Difference is thirty dollars.
If anybody wants to, like a motion to approve his bid, ba- based on it being the best bid, and us, if you give us a couple of references to go look at for next Thursday, I mean, that's just something y'all think about.
How much was the first bid, first round? Remembered?
Oh, well, we, we bid out, I think this is three or four times. I can't, I can't remember how much that it's, it's claimed, but I do know, and, and I'm sure that Daniel will tell you as well, concrete went up.
It is going to begin, it's, it's, they want it to begin in, in, uh, in the-
I had one tell me on the, uh, that bid on the election commission, you know, they're, they're scared to be, stuff goes up daily, or weekly. And, you know, six months later, you know, they're shooting the prices up on these bids just to make sure they don't lose money.
Well, it's just the wire, the wire went up five dollars per week, so.
It's like a daily occurrence, stuff's going up.
I make a motion, we ask them for some references we can look at and table this till next week.
I'll see. Got a motion, my dude. Second, my John Holt, to continue this next Thursday.
So, you want, want to give us both bidders to look at their work, or you just?
Yes.
So, we'll look at both there?
Yeah.
Uh, it's only if I ask them for two, at least two references.
Two good ones and two bad ones. Any more discussion? Roll call.
Greg.
Yes.
Debbie.
Yes.
Debbie.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Samantha.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
And, uh, real quick, the RFPs for the waiting proposal.
Yeah, we'll move back to the first round.
Thursday, yeah, just move it off to next week. Put in on, with the Thursday, too.
Is this next Thursday going to be the fourth mission?
It's, it's the second part of this. Before you adjourn and have another meeting, it costs county nine hundred bucks plus our hundred fees.
Right.
But we just recess and take it back up Thursday.
Motion to recess.
What about courthouse group?
Courthouse group, I have talked to you, but I've not gotten anything to put down as far as that. I know you all read up there that day, and if you all have anybody that has, uh, uh, the pitch that you all wanted to put on that roof, things like that, so I can turn out the bid, since I know that the buildings and grounds committee met that night. And if you all have anything as far as specifications. Yes, I received the calls. Uh, Eddie called me, uh, Thursday about the heat issue, and I did contact the, into the company that we used to rebuild those units there to work on that unit last year, and there was a chance this is going to be covered under the warranty. They will be there in the morning to get that done. They just had a whole lockdown, they told weather, trying to get other service called done. But they are on their way in the morning, and I did contact Eddie, Mr. Cheek, about that this morning, to let him know that they would be there. But if anybody has anything, because, you know, it's like Commissioner Pfeffer said earlier, if there's anything specific on that roof, as far as, you know, trusses, how wide that you all want the trusses, what size you all want those trusses, before I just meet with somebody and let them give me that idea before I put this out, if it's, uh, if you all have anything on that roof.
We'll go back and look at, uh, the, well, it was a long time ago, without, getting older on the commission. How long has it been since we've done, uh, community center? We put a hip roof on, what was it, John, fifteen years ago? If we could find something on it, it worked real good. It was a flat roof, like the corral. And we put a hip roof on it like we did election commission, and it's been leak-free ever since.
Was there a roof there, too?
Yep, that was on the roof, and I think at the courthouse in Duck Town, the heat in our unit's on the roof, too. So, they have to be moved to the ground. But it just, it's simple. It's like a six-twelve pitch or something over the span of the building, running east to west, but I'll see if I can find it.
And like I said, it, you know, I don't care to take two, two or three that I know that the, you know, the building, the buildings and stuff like that. Versus if you all have something in mind, we drill this out as far as that or going off somebody else. And I know you all said you want to look for the difference between that and laying chingle roofing to be put on, along with that courthouse.
Motion to resist.
All right, dude, you made a motion. It ain't second. Uh, any discussion, or he says, or me, my Mark second, I'm sorry. Roll call.